It is now five o'clock, December nineteenth, twenty seventeen. And I call to order the meeting of the -- meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the CDS Housing Assets Successor. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to address the council. Therefore, can we have declaration of closed session items by city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have several items this evening, however, several of these matters are related. First item is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2, and the facts and circumstances pertaining to that are set forth pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9E3. That's item A for the City Council. Items B and C are related to items H, I, J, and K. B and C on behalf of the City Council. H, I, J, and K on behalf of the Airport Authority, that is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, and the case names and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. Item D on behalf of the City Council is related to item L on behalf of the Airport Authority, again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, and the case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item E and item F are real property negotiations on behalf of the City Council pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8, and with respect to both E and F, the parcels and the properties are identified as well as the negotiating parties. Item G is public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57, and the position is interim city manager. Item M, as in Mary, is real property negotiations on behalf of the Successor Agency pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8, and again, the parcel information and parties are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, I would ask you to add an item pursuant to Government Code 549-54.2B2 as an urgency matter. In order to do so, you have to make a finding that the item arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's immediate need to take action. The item in question is actually the receipt of new litigation that we received today after the posting of the agenda. It would be pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, and the case is David Stapleton et al. versus the City of Victorville et al., case number 517CV02469. As I mentioned, this was received today, and since we do not have a meeting at the beginning of January, we may have to respond timely, so there's no time to respond. I'd like to get direction on this tonight, so I need a motion in order to add that based on the findings that it arose after the posting of the agenda and there's immediate need. So, I'm looking for a motion for that, to add that item.
I make a motion to -- session items?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Garcia, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
For clarification, what is it that we're seconding and motioning?
The motion is to add an urgency item to be discussed in closed session, which is a new lawsuit that was filed today, and I need to get direction on how to respond to it prior to the second meeting in January.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
That's all of the agenda items. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the CDS Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
May we have far closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had several items this evening, however, many of them are related. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2, and the facts and circumstances are set forth pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9E3. Items B and C on behalf of the City Council were related to items H, I, J, and K on behalf of the Airport Authority, that is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, and the case names and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. Item D on behalf of the City Council was related to item L on behalf of the Airport Authority, again, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1, and again, the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Items E and F on behalf of the City Council, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8, the negotiating parties and the designated -- or the properties are designated on the agenda. Item G is public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code 549-57, position title interim city manager. And lastly, item M on behalf of the Successor Agency was real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. In addition to those items, the council agreed to add an urgency item pursuant to Government Code 549-54.2B2, and made the finding that there's immediate need to take action on this item and that it occurred after the posting of the agenda. The item was pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. The case name is Stapleton et al. versus City of Victorville, and the case number is 517CV02469. At this point, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you very much. The invitation will be delivered by Pastor Tim Cool from High Desert Church and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Police Chief John Schuler, so please stand.
All right, let's pray. God, we thank you for the night. God, we thank you for our town. Father, we pray your grace and care over the leadership of our schools, our businesses, our law enforcement. Father, we pray that you would lead this meeting as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
The F first? The F first presentation that I have here is for Hannah Reynolds. Hannah, how are you doing? Nice to meet you. You can stand over here. I am pleased to present this certificate that I have here of recognition to Hannah Reynolds for winning the City of Victorville's Civil Rights Memorial essay contest. A sixth grader at Galileo Academy. Hannah wrote a tribute to Cesar Chavez's commitment to social justice. A portion of her essay will be displayed on a bronze plaque at the Civil Rights Memorial and unveiled during a ceremony on March thirty-first, which happens to be Cesar Chavez's day. On behalf of the entire City Council, congratulations, Hannah, and I will present you with your certificate. City of Victorville, twenty seventeen Civil Rights Memorial essay contest presented to Hannah Reynolds. In recognition of your winning essay about civil rights leader Cesar Chavez, a permanent bronze plaque will be installed at the Victorville Civil Rights Memorial. Your name and a portion of the essay will be viewed and appreciated for all future generations to appreciate. Congratulations, Hannah Reynolds, and we are so proud and happy that you won. Here you are. So let's give her a big hand. This one here is for Deputy Frank Dimara. Is that the way pronounced? Dimara? Is he here? I am so proud to present to you Deputy Frank Dimara. He is the main advisor for the Sheriff's Explorer Program. Deputy Dimara recently transported the explorers to the Victorville home of an -- yeah, he transported the explorers to the Victorville home of an elderly woman who is on a fixed income, lives alone, and has no family nearby. Deputy Dimara used his own money to purchase a Christmas tree and decorations. With the help of explorers, they decorated the woman's home and tree for the finishing touches. Deputy Dimara filled some of the kitchen cabinets with food to help her along the way. It is my pleasure to present Deputy Dimara with this certificate on behalf of the City Council in recognition and appreciation of his kindness and dedication to the residents Certificate of recognition presented to Deputy Frank Dimara. The City Council of the City of Victorville hereby commands Deputy Dimara for the excellent example of leadership and acts of compassion and caring for his human -- his fellow human beings that he has demonstrated in his role as the main advisor for the Sheriff's Explorer Program, signed December nineteen twenty seventeen. Gloria Garcia, Mayor of the City of Victorville. Congratulations, and we are so proud of what you have done, and it just goes to show that you have a big heart, and if we had more people like you in this world, we would all be much better people for that. Congratulations. Thank you so very much. Happy New Year, and may God bless you, and give you prosperity, good health, and joy. Thank you. I do have a picture here of Sheriff Dimara and the explorers in the home of the lady that they assisted and put up the tree for and provided some food for her. If anyone wants to see it, I'll leave it right here, and you can see it later. Well, here comes the part that's always kind of sad. Tonight, sadly, tonight, we will bid farewell to our city manager, Doug Robertson. Doug has been with the city for more than fifteen years and served as our city manager for just about half that time. He took the helm at a difficult time, and throughout his leadership, created problem-solving and passion to innovate, we are churning a new chapter in Victorville. The expansion of restaurant row and growth at SCLA are visible symbols of Doug's influence on our city. We are sad to see you go, but we wish you well as you move on to your new position with Apple Valley. We know you are leaving us in good hands with Keith. Thank you for your distinguished service to Victorville, and now may I have Mr. Doug Robertson come down, please?
Don't break that camera.
Not sure that suit's legal.
Certificate of recognition, happy trails to you. This certificate is presented to Doug Robertson. Thank you for your fifteen years of service to the City of Victorville, dated this nineteenth day of December twenty seventeen, signed by all council members. And sadly, we say goodbye, but I know you will still be around, and so we will see you, so it's not goodbye forever. At this time, I'd like to make a special presentation to our -- a special presentation to our city clerk, Carol Lee Bates. Carol Lee is retiring after thirty-one years of service to Victorville. Doing the math, that means that Carol Lee joined the city as a very young woman, and she's still very young. She's still very young. Just think of the history she has witnessed through the years. Carol Lee is hardworking and gets the job done, but she's fun-loving and opens her door to anyone in need of her help, and I can witness to that. She has been there for me in the last five years that I have been with the city, and if it wasn't for her, I think I would have been probably ready to just say goodbye, just like she's doing right now. But I'll stick it out, not for thirty-one more years, but possibly another three or four, maybe eight, I don't know. It all depends on how things go. Throughout her time as city clerk, Carol Lee has been a stabilizing force and a true asset. Carol Lee, I thank you for your service and congratulate you for a distinguished career with the City of Victorville. It is with a set heart that we say goodbye, but again, not forever, because I know you will be around, and we have lunches to do now and different things. So I present this to you, Carol Lee Bates, appreciation for thirty-one years of service to the City of Victorville, and it's dated August -- oh, from August nineteen eighty-six to December twenty seventeen. Oh, my goodness.
I was just a kid, didn't really know anything about a city, or a city council, or a city manager. Yep, but it has been just a wonderful part of my life. I've enjoyed it, and it's been great knowing all the staff, all the councils over the years, and the city managers, and I just feel very fortunate, and I'm, I'm ready to go, but I have thoroughly enjoyed my time here.
It is so sad that we have to say goodbye from her duties here, but of course, she will be around, and I don't know how anybody can replace her. She is such a wonderful, efficient person. There isn't a thing that she does not know, or a person that she doesn't know who they are, and always so pleasant, never refuses to assist you with whatever, she's always there, ready for you. So anyhow, thank you, Carol Lee.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything wrong with us chiming in if we want to. Needs city managers, we need the deputies, we need all the high-powered city staff. I, for one, I don't know how I would have ever done this job without Carol Lee. I think either Marcy or Carol Lee was the first face I looked at when I decided to run. But there isn't, hardly a week goes by that I'm not on the phone with her a couple of times to understand my job, to know what needs to be done. Been a huge help.
If I could just go really quick. Thank you, Carol Lee, for all of your service, and just to know that when I first came in to consider running for council was actually 2012, and I did get a good vibe, but I realized very quickly what, what this would entail, and, but one of the real joys that I always tell people of doing this is meeting great folks that we have here in the desert, and most people would not know all the different folks that are throughout the desert, but just that good vibe you talked about, and, and the class and the support that you've given everyone. You know, sometimes things come down to personalities, but I've always found you to be one of the most pleasant people I've ever met in my whole life, so I really wish you best wishes, and continued success, and of course, I feel like, you know, we, we're just not that far away, and of course, whatever you need from us, you know, we're here for you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't know how long we worked together, but it was a long time, but Carol Lee was literally, you know, she was the right-hand of the city manager. We didn't have an assistant city manager or deputy back then. I think that was the first person that I had met that worked so hard. She had a talent that's not required anymore, which is shorthand. That, I'm telling you, she saved my life more than once with all of the information that was going on, and I have thanked her over and over and over. Carol Lee, I can't thank you enough for all the years of service. It's been great. I was a benefactor of that, but especially the employees and the City of Victorville was a benefactor. Thank you so much.
One else want to say anything? Well, outside of just, just performing duties, I can say that Carol Lee has been the most professional person that I have ever met, and not only that, she is a lady, a very refined lady. I admire you so much. And just for the record, we both graduated from the same college, different majors, but nevertheless, we attended the same college.
Yes.
Different years.
Oh, yeah, different, different years.
No, and it wasn't that far apart, because remember, I got married, I got married, and had children, and went back to school, so it was pretty close to her time, too. I did everything backwards, but if I had it to do over again, I would do it exactly the same way. Anyhow, we will continue on with our meeting now. Okay, we do not, let's see, we did the, Madam Clerk, will you please present the agenda to the council, and any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comments sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there is one revision to tonight's agenda, and that relates to item number B3, and this is a memorandum from the city engineer clarifying information that is contained in that agenda item. That information is on the dais and available to the public, and those are all the revisions I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we move on to appeal hearings, and we start with item A1, Request for Continuance of Appeal Hearing by Sterling Capital Investments, applicant on case Plan 1700017, a site plan to allow for an approximately 500,000 square foot addition to an existing distribution warehouse. Appealant lost out, I don't know how to draw a, draw a LP, I hope I pronounced it right. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council open the public hearing and take any testimony, and continue the item to the February 20th, 2018 city council meeting.
Are there any questions by council members or for staff? Anyone have any questions? At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public.
It'd be helpful to have a motion to continue this item to February 20th meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move to continue this item to the February 20th, 2018 meeting.
Motion by Mr. DeGretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item B1, A Public Hearing to Hear Arguments for and Against a Proposed Resolution Granting a Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity to Unit Care Medical Transportation LLC for a Non-Emergency Medical Transportation Business as Set forth in Resolution Number Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt Resolution Number 17-063 at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. Do any council member have any questions of staff?
I have quite a few questions that were submitted to staff, but I didn't get a reply because I know I just provided them just today.
Will you please continue?
So this is going to be for B1, Resolution Number 17-063, application for CPCN. Why does the city, why does city council receive certificates of public convenience and necessity when not too long ago, long ago, it was submitted by city staff to have lawsuits go directly to staff and not reviewed by city council? It was said that efficiency was a necessity in the lawsuits that came to the city council, yet the council continues to see the certificates of public convenience. I'm not asking to direct this away from city council review, but instead to consider what it is that is efficient, effective, and streamlined. Also, why would council not adopt something that has passed the Business License Division and the Police Department? In the history of these items coming to council with both requirements, when were these items not passed or adopted? And I see it's Chapter 5.08 of the Victorville Municipal Code provides for the regulations of use and operations of car for hire on city streets. What are we doing for Lyft and Uber drivers, and how are we regulating this use, or have we? And if so, would you provide at least two examples? And those are my questions.
Sure, this, to answer the first one, this isn't a lawsuit, actually, it's a request to be able to provide medical transportation for individuals who need it, non-emergency, and these are required to come to the city council for, for approval. As far as Lyft and Uber, we don't have any regulations in place. I know the League of Cities is looking at, at options, and they've studied it, but it is a, a very difficult thing to regulate, just because of the nature of the business.
Those are all my questions.
Anyone else? At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards from the public. Therefore, I close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Are there any questions from council members? Comments, questions? There's a five-minute time limit.
For the notice of exemption, item B2, the question is, there are currently...
No, we're still on item B1.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any questions on B1?
No.
Sorry?
No.
So I move on to item B2, A Public Hearing to Hear Arguments for and Against a Notice of Intent to Adopt a Notice of Exemption. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt and approve the notice of exemption for the Santa Fe Wash manhole erosion control project.
Does any council member have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes, for item B2, notice of exemption, there are currently four manholes per agenda item B2. If one is in the Santa Fe Wash, where are the other three, and where are the addresses? That's my only question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an item dealing with the notice of intent to adopt the notice of exemption, and the notice of exemption is intended to allow for the commencement of the physical work in the Santa Fe Wash to occur. Lately, we've been trying to do these items in connection or in companion with the actual award of contract to try to make them more simple. We actually awarded at the last council meeting the contract for this work, so this is becoming the formality as to dealing with the environmental side of it. Speaking to the question asked, the improvements are all done within or along the Santa Fe Channel upon the manholes that lead to the sewer trunk lines, so there's no address. In fact, there's an illustration in the staff write-up that identifies a little bit better where along the Santa Fe Channel the physical work is to occur.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
No further questions.
I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public, so I close the public hearing. Does anyone want to, any council member would like to discuss the item? No? Can I have a motion? In a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, is there a presentation on this one? This is the one that has the revision?
No presentation required. I think the staff did circulate some additional information because there was an inaccurate statement in the staff report characterizing the low bidder as being a lowest on each individual item, for all, with the exception of one, but that actually wasn't the case, but it doesn't change staff's recommendation of who the actual low bidder is.
Okay. A Public Hearing to Hear Arguments for and Against Approval of Notice of Exemption and Award of Contract to Christians and Brothers General Engineering, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Water District Board of Directors approve the notice of exemption and award a contract to Christians, Christianson Brothers General Engineering in the amount of not to exceed $620,000 for the service line replacement project area number two, with the option of four annual contract extensions.
Thank you. Any council member have questions of staff?
Yes, I do. For B3, the budget account number laid out on service line area two, what budget is that coming from? A general fund, an enterprise fund? I saw here it says general line, but I didn't know if that was actually a fund that it was coming from, line area number two.
Service line area two, bear with me, see if there's a map. I know the, well, to answer the basic part of the question, this is Water District Fund, so they're restricted to the Water District, and this actually looks like Project Area Two, which is the old Wid Two area. There's a map that defines the area for which this work is going to be focused, so it's largely south of Palmdale Road, north of the California Aqueduct, west of 395, and east of Coughlin Road. So line area two is likely a reference to Wid Two, or the former Baldi Mesa Water District area.
Thank you, no further questions.
I open the...
award of contract to Christians and Brothers General Engineering, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Water District Board of Directors approve the notice of exemption and award a contract to Christians, Christianson Brothers General Engineering in the amount of not to exceed six hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the service line replacement project area number two with the option of four annual contract extensions.
Thank you. Any council member have questions of staff?
Yes, I do. For B three, the budget account number laid out on service line area two, what budget is that coming from? A general fund, an enterprise fund? I saw here it says general line, but I didn't know if that was actually a fund that it was coming from, line area number two.
Service line area two, bear with me, see if there's a map. I know the, well, to answer the basic part of the question, this is Water District Fund, so they're restricted to the Water District, and this actually looks like Project Area Two, which is the old Wid Two area. There's a map that defines the area for which this work is going to be focused, so it's largely south of Palmdale Road, north of the California Aqueduct, west of three ninety-five and east of Coughlin Road. So line area two is, is likely a reference to Wid Two or the former Baldi Mesa Water District area.
Thank you, no further questions.
I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards from the public. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Any council member have any questions or discussion on this item?
You know, I have another, I have other questions on this one.
Go ahead.
Does the City of Victorville not have staff on site that is qualified to replace the plastic water service ladder, laterals with the copper wires? Also, it seems to me that we've handed out a lot of jobs to be contracted out instead of hiring for the city, maybe like a seasonal job or, I don't know, employing some of our residents. And why is the fiscal impact over half a million, so six hundred and sixty-five thousand, and the amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty thousand? I know I saw a ten percent contingency management fee. And would you explain why there are two figures with the different dollar amounts? Maybe the contingency fee is, would the explanation would bridge the gap for me? And last, how and who came up with the budget? How did the team of people, if there was a team, calculate the thirty years' worth of replacement lateral?
Madam Mayor, if I might, this item is dealing with a contract that serves as an on-call contract, so as to the first question, seeking whether or not we had experienced or qualified staff to do this work, certainly you do have plenty experienced, qualified staff. In fact, we see them out there regularly doing this exact kind of work. The scope and nature of this work is above and beyond the amount or the volume of service line replacements that we're currently undertaking, and so that the public can get a general sense of what this is dealing with. A service line replacement is largely going to a public water main in the street and replacing non-standard, typically PVC pipe that actually leads to the meter of a residential unit or even a commercial service, and effectively what we're doing is we're removing that service and installing a superior material, copper material, so that those service laterals last longer. We have an inordinate number of service line leaks currently throughout the city, so largely we're focused on areas of the city that have higher density and population. In this particular case, we know of issues, we've identified issues, but as you can see from the map, it's in a fairly remote part of the town, so we've decided it to be more efficient to rely on an on-call contractor for these remote part of the town so as to not take the crews too far away from the more dense areas within the city where we're, where we're seeing the more recurring nature of service line leaks. I think that covered most of it as to the contingency versus management fee. It's not a, it's not a, I think what you're seeing there is a construction management fee, so that's actually different than contingency, and that's just a cost associated with the contractor managing the actual work, so that gets built into the total cost. I think finally to characterize, even though this is creating a project cost or a budget of six hundred and sixty-five thousand, this is work that's identified in the system plan and is for on-call work, so it's not necessarily certain that we're going to spend all of it, it's certainly just a budget that we have available so that we can meet as much need as possible.
Thank you, no further questions.
Just for the record, had you gone over all this with Councilmember Gomez?
This particular item, not in that level of detail, no, we didn't.
But you did review the agenda with her then?
We did have a general, yeah, we do have a general review meeting with-
I just want to make sure that we are covering then. Okay, thank you.
For information, this is part of the higher capital project budgeting we did back January last year where we gave you instructions to get these projects moving along this year.
That's, that's exactly correct. In fact, when we did the rate study, however long ago that was now, a year and a half ago, that was one of the biggest criticisms that we weren't spending the money fast enough. So as a part of that rate study, you will find in there amounts for service line replacements, and that's how this money is actually arrived at.
Funds that, that rate payers pay as part of their fee to not only operate the district but call this replacement that needs to be done.
That's correct.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have to open the public hearing still?
No, I think that's, that's been opened.
It has been opened, okay.
So there's no motion by Mr. Kennedy?
We're ready for a motion.
Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B four. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against approval of notice of exemption and award of contract to the Van Dyke Corporation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Water District Board of Directors approve the notice of exemption and award a construction contract to the Van Dyke Corporation in the amount of two million, five hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the water pipeline small diameter replacement, S D oh nine, project BM eighteen dash zero four three.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes, I do. So, but for item B four, there were eleven bidders. I don't know who they were, so if someone can supply that information. And what were their construction management totals and their contingency? Because I'm starting to find a couple of patterns that I'd like to see if that's how it works. Not quite sure yet. And was there a reason as to why a bid schedule was not submitted for this agenda item as it was submitted for the agenda item B three? This bid had a total bid in words, and at an earlier agenda, I remember that the bid that was not in writing as this one was, there was some discrepancy that was excused when there was a lower bidder that was not in words. I don't know if you guys can recall previous two agendas, three agendas ago? And is this a technicality that may be used by staff to exclude a bidder? And what caused city staff to focus on area S D dash zero nine?
Madam Mayor and members of the Council, if I might, as to the bid schedule, I think it's really just a formatting difference between staff preparing this item, so comparing item, the previous item, I think it was B three, to this B four, there was an alluding to a bid schedule. Certainly in B four, it's not in the staff report, but if you actually go a little bit deeper into the document, I think it's page four or five, you will in fact find the bid schedule, and you'll find the bid schedule for each of the respective bidders. Certainly, as it relates to trying to exclude, I think that was one of the questions. It is a public bidding process, so it's open to the public. I don't know of any opportunity to exclude a potential bidder. And as it turns out, in this particular case, we weighed the final three low bidders, which is outlined in your staff, and we actually bid asking for the total construction cost absent contingencies. The contingency is something that we add on, so it does not affect the outcome of the low bidders. I think finally, if I understand all the questions correctly as to why this area and not another area of the city, certainly I can speak to, well, first, what this project is doing is it's replacing a very small diameter pipe, and it's actually replacing it with an eight-inch pipe, so you're going to get a little, a lot more flow, you're going to get a much more robust system and make the, the actual water delivery system healthier to operate. But I can speak to that question as it relates to the large area and what we call the square mile area. One of the main reasons why we're getting this project out now, or would like to get this project out now, is because we do intend in the spring to go out with a major slurry seal project for the square mile, so ideally, we'd like to do our trenching and cutting of, of the road system before we actually go in and make the slurry improvements to try to niceen up the, those neighborhoods. So I think, does that answer all your questions?
Yeah, would you repeat, where is the schedule? Because I'm looking at a couple of pages, and I didn't see that schedule on B four, only on B three, but I understand that it's different in formatting, so I was just wondering what it was.
So one of the first ones is on page thirty-eight of four hundred and ninety-one. That's it right there.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else? At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public, so I close the public hearing. Are, is there any discussion from council members at this time? If not, can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items C one through C eight can be approved with one motion unless there is a request to remove an item for a further discussion.
I have discussions on all consent calendars with the exception of C three.
And all except C three?
Yeah, all of them except for C three.
Move approval of C three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
All the, those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, for item C one, I voted on D one and D fourteen for the past one no on the items, asking you to reflect on the document why I voted no. It's not reflected in the document anymore, and I would like an answer for that if possible. And when was the handbook adopted? When did this take place in terms of immediacy and also within the thirty days that it was adopted with the date? And would you be able to supply those dates with the questions? In regards to item D nine, when is the termination date December five, twenty eighteen? And will it be automatically agendized to know when it's terminated? And we're talking about the PACE program there. When will council receive the quarterly reports to look at this program occurrences, meaning the dates and time? And I'd like to see an update from staff at a prior months before it automatically expires to please take note to let us know when this is going to come about rather than having someone to agendize for C two, Administrative Services Department payroll list. Would you verify if employee's ID eleven forty-six is on on-call, part-time, or an employee, a seasonal employee, or what it is that this person is getting five dollars for and fifty dollars for? To me, that was just a little bit abstract, so I thought I'd call it out. For C four, the commercial demand schedule, what are the medical reimbursements for? I see a lot of them there, a slew of people getting some of these. And for the Adelanto Elementary School District, the crossing guard services is something that Victorville gets reimbursed for. I was under the impression that they hire, we, we help them hire, they hire, and then we pay, so I was just making that connection because I know we did it for another school elementary. And in terms of Apple Valley Animal Hospital, I was wondering if the City of Victorville asks its clients to pay for the spay and neuter program, or is that something that the city does out of courtesy? For C five, amendment one to the original agreement project, C C seventeen dash zero six nine, we have Infinity National Security Services and the library. I was just wondering if we wanted to make the connection between all tech and Infinity to now be one with city services and the library and city hall. And C eight, under VIP and senior groups, I see six hundred and twenty-three participants in the Spanish section. That's very new to me, I haven't seen that, I think that's magnificent. I was wondering if I can get some pertinent information in regards to that, and that would be under Christian, and then that's it.
Move approval of the rest of the items on the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D one. Resolution declaring the results of the November seventh, twenty seventeen special municipal election as set forth in Resolution number seventeen dash zero six four. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution number seventeen dash zero six four.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I have a comment on item D one. Do we know what the total cost expended when to promote measure K ballots and how much the special election costs the taxpayers of Victorville? Yes. Do we know what the total cost expended when to promote measure K ballots and how much the special election costs the taxpayers of Victorville?
As far as the cost of the election, I can answer that part, we don't know yet, we don't have the bill.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
Not for item D one.
I move on to item D two.
We need a vote, Councilmember Gomez, I need your vote. So the motion carries unanimously to approve.
D two, adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of amendment A one for the one-year extension of county library agreement number fifteen dash one two zero. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution number seventeen dash zero six five, authorizing the execution of amendment A one, thereby extending city library access to the county circulation system and database support for an additional year at the current cost of fifty-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any council member have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes, for item D two, why did we choose to write a resolution to adopt the amendment change? Is that typical? Or, because I thought this was more of a contract rather than the resolution or a motion that's being adopted.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. If I can answer your question best I can, we sent this to Council because of the dollar value of the contract, which was fifty-six thousand, one hundred dollars for the year, and because it was an extension, it has to go through Council.
So then it's normal procedure to write a resolution rather than have an agreement or an MOU or a contract? That's pretty much what I was asking.
It would be typical to do a resolution for an amendment when the original contract was approved by a resolution.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Move approval.
I do not have any cards from, from the public.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D three. Green Tree Boulevard Circulation Map Classification. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council receive and file a report on the Green Tree Boulevard Circulation Map Classification, and any direction given to staff would be at the discretion of the City Council.
Does any council member have any questions of staff at this time?
Comment.
Or comments?
My understanding is the Planning Commission recommends a joint meeting with the City Council before there are any changes to the circulation map. Have we received that request from the Planning Commission yet, Madam Clerk?
I have not received that request.
My, my request is that the City Council take no action of any kind until we're at the see the request, make a determination whether or not they want to have a joint meeting. I recommend we do, but we don't have the request in front of us, I think it would be improper until we have a formal request. Well, it's, the Planning Commission discussed this matter last Wednesday night. My understanding is their recommendation is to hold the matter until they can have a joint meeting with the Council. They haven't forwarded that to the Council or the city clerk yet, so I think it would be improper to do anything until we receive the Planning Commission. At that point, the Council can determine if they want to have a joint meeting or not. This time, you can't- I think, it's a receive and file, my recommendation, the Council do not- Well, just don't do anything, you don't have a, there was a reason for this being on here, but at the- on here, but at the time this was discussed, I made a request, put Green Tree Boulevard for discussion on the council, discussion only. No point were we informed that this was going to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission heard this matter, said they need a joint meeting. Therefore, I don't think that we take any action until we hear from the Planning Commission.
Or you could make a motion to just delay this item until you hear from the Planning Commission.
But, well, delay, okay, that would be the action then, but yeah. I don't want to receive it and file and send a message that this is okay.
You've motioned to either delay or table this item until we've heard from the Planning Commission.
Move that we table the item. I move that we table the item.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I also have comment on this, I'm, I was reading the circulation element, and it said failure to achieve an effective roadway network would have negative economic consequences that could adversely affect the quality of life for local residents and businesses. And this happens to do with the congestion, and I did ask and get the minutes from the Planning Commission, and they put this to April 2018. So I was wondering, what are the ramifications of possibly putting this all the way until April? And extending it up that far? Are there monies lost or anything that we should be concerned about that we're not hearing from staff at the moment?
I don't think there's an urgency to this item at this point.
Alright, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just request a point of, I don't know, point of order, I suppose? Our procedures are to peer discussion, make a motion, vote, move to the next item. If Councilmember Gomez wants to discuss every item after we voted, then I think we should, after we've gotten the motion and the second, before we vote, ask if there's any more discussion? And have the discussion happen before the vote instead of after. It's completely inappropriate to keep talking about an item after we voted.
That, that would be appropriate to do it that way, too, after you've got a motion and a second, ask if there's, ask if there's any further discussion before the vote.
I, I think it's necessary to ask for discussion, I think it's necessary for the mayor to declare that discussion has ended.
Vote's taken, we're done.
That's the appropriate action on the ballot.
Yeah, so as a point of order, when Mr. Cox went ahead and did the commenting, there was any immediate action to move the item, and so there was no recollection of who was going to be talking, so I'm going to always make commentary, so if this is what we're gonna do, I totally agree. If there's an end of discussion, if that's also said, but also give other council members the opportunity to speak, so I totally agree with that as well.
Okay, I move on to item D4, construct.
Mayor Garcia, just for the record, I do need to record Councilmember Gomez's vote, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item D4, construction, contract award for runway 17/35 rehabilitation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Directors approve the award of a construction contract to Kaufman Specialties, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $11,965,000 for one runway 1735 rehabilitation project number CC17-111.
I'm just following my instructions from our city attorney, and are there any council members that have any questions of staff at this time?
No.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those...
Now, now would be appropriate to ask for any further discussion.
Or you could say, is there any question or discussion?
Right.
But unless you ask for discussion, declared discussion's ended, any council member that can question it, we should do that before we take the vote.
Well, I'm following instructions from the attorney and...
No, I think we just changed those instructions tonight.
But that's, that's consistent with the instruction, after the motion and the second, we should ask if there's any further discussion.
Okay.
There any discussion?
Now it's time for the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
End of discussion, and I'm moving on to item D5. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, setting, seating as the governing board of, of the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, authorizing the sale of property to Space Center Miraloma. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number RSA17-007, approving the sale of property more particularly described as APN Number 309040105, 309040106, 309041101, 309041104, and 309041105 to Space Center Miraloma, and authorize the Director of Economic Development to execute any and all transactional documents to effectuate this sale.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you, Sophie, for answering the multitude of questions, I just want to verify, so we had this property at $2.50, but now it's currently being sold at 50 cents per square foot. To me, it, it just, I understand it's a fire sale, are we doing anything to market this to the wide community in, in our Victor Valley? So that we can get it like a best price or something for the payout of our debt?
Thank you, Ms. Gomez, the, this property was not marketed, listed for sale. The direction that we received and the approval we received from the State Department of Finance in our long-range property management plan was to offer the property to Space Center Miraloma at the appraised value, because we had demonstrated in the written record that the former RDA had been in active discussions with that group to sell the property to them prior to the dissolution occurring. So it was not listed on the open market, but it is being sold at the appraised value. The acquisition at 250 took place in January of 2007, and the market was very different, that was the height of the real estate market. So the price today is much different, and that is the reason for the discrepancy in the, in the sale price.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Sophie, since it was originally a redevelopment agency, and the intent was to do a particular kind of development in that agency, and we've already had people go there, it would make the most sense to be consistent with all of that past, to offer to the people who are not to put it out and have, have a helter-skelter development in that, in that area, does that make sense?
It does, and that's correct, it, this, the properties, the five parcels, were part of a much larger land assemblage that was being done between the redevelopment agency and the developer, to ultimately build a manufacturing or distribution facility in our Foxborough Industrial Park. And so, we were in that process of, of acquiring properties, it was a partnership, as many of our RDA projects were, and it would have led to that ultimate development. And so, they were the logical buyer, they were in line to buy, but because of the dissolution, that couldn't move forward. And so we're just recognizing and honoring that work in those years, and the intent of what was gonna happen with the property, in offering it to this, to this developer at the appraised value.
And am I right in this, that the proceeds don't come to the city, they go to the successor agency, and then they get distributed according to the Department of Finance?
That is correct.
Whole disbanding of RDA, that whole methodology?
That's correct, they will not be available to the city for expenditures, they go to the successor agency, they're used first to pay for any enforceable obligations in the current ROPS period, and if there is residual, then they'll be distributed to the affected taxing entities in that project area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any cards from the public. Can we have a motion?
Assuming that discussion has ended, I move approval based on the staff's recommendation.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy.
Any further discussion?
No.
Time for a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to D6. Reject a bid proposal for SCLA Air Expressway Fence Relocation. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council reject the bid submittals for the SCLA Air Expressway Fence Relocation Project.
Thank you. Are there any questions for council members of staff?
No.
One else? No? I do have some cards on this item. No? But these are all...
Comment.
I'll move that we reject the proposals.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. Any discussion?
And the discussion has been closed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, presentation of request to approve the purchase of Townmaster Trailer Model Number T-40. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council award RDA equipment, RDO equipment company as distributor to Towmaster, Inc., the piggyback purchase of a Town, Towmaster Trailer Model T-40 in the amount of $29,576.96 under the Houston-Galveston Area Council Interlocal Contract for Cooperative Purchasing Number 11-2956, as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2017-2018 capital improvement project budget.
Thank you. I do not have any cards from the public.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe the city attorney should... Seven, eight, nine, and 10 are all purchase decisions under the piggyback program, is there...
You could deal with them all in one motion, as long as it's clear that the motion considers D7, D8, D9, and you ask for questions from council members on all three or any of those three items.
Thank you.
I would propose a motion to approve D7, eight, nine, and 10, and then let anybody who has specific questions fire away.
Okay, any questions?
Question, Madam Mayor? This is Houston-Galveston Cooperation Agreement, isn't there an Arizona, Nevada, California, something, any closer to home than, that has the same kind of a conglomerate that has this kind of an agreement, other than Galveston, Texas?
I invite John Mindiola to come up and help us answer that question.
Hi, John.
Thank you, Councilmember Cox. The Houston-Galveston Area Council is a cooperative program that's nationwide, so the suppliers can come from California. Several of our last HGAC purchases have come from California, so if there's a supplier in Riverside or San Diego that, that would be able to fulfill this request, then we would be able to get that from them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Question? No? And we have a motion to approve items 7, 8, 9, and 10.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D11, the January 2, 2018 city council meeting. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council cancel the January 2, 2018 regular council meeting.
Any discussion on this?
No.
Motion?
Move approval?
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to public comments. And I do have some cards. Jean Ulrich, and after Jean will be Christine Blakely.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Last time I was here, I talked about dumping, and you advised me to talk to the city about putting some dumpsters up, and some cameras, and everything along those lines, and they chose to play the what-if game, and I got pretty frustrated over that, because we do have a large dumping program here, that they like to dump a lot of things in our area, especially where I live at, over on the Dos Palmas, Manavista, the northwestern area of the town. I've been averaging anywhere from two to three calls to Myrow over there at Public Works to pick things up. And I don't call unless I have at least three to five items of places that were dumped to get that taken care of, that's how much I'm getting in our area. And it really needs to be addressed or looked at, or rethink that area about the dumpsters. And plus, when I've been calling over there, she has been taking the, the reports real quickly, but unfortunately, the city has not been responding, the Public Works Department, we have not seen them. And sometimes, it only takes three, four months, at one time, it took almost five months for them to pick stuff up on Bear, on Bear Valley. I mean, it's getting really, really bad, and I don't understand where the Public Works people are working, they said they're busy doing other things. Well, I think that's kind of important, I mean, we are part of the city too, we should be, have our areas addressed, and even the areas, south of our areas, over there, north of Bear Valley, the dumping has just become atrocious, it just likes a great big dump. And I've even gone to, when there's areas there, they've gone with complete immunity, they'll drop trash bags with their names, addresses, and, and nothing ever happens to them. I called the code enforcement, they never get back to me, they never say anything, and the stuff just sits there. We had some stuff there with some TVs and mattresses, they were sat there. Some people set some mat, some kids set some mattresses on fire, right in direct path of my home, and there's a lot of fields in our area, overgrown because of the bad winter, and, you know, it could have caught our, caught all of our houses on fire, you know what, how, what recent events, how much that could cause to the city. As a matter of fact, I did, when I was clearing the area right behind my house, which is not my property, somebody else's property, I was watching, looked over, I saw two kids over there trying to start another one on fire. So I did call the fire department, but, and then they called the, because we were, I've been trying also to get the whole area cleaned up. If you're, if you're familiar with the area, it was a building area where frontier homes came in, we had a drop in the economy, they stopped doing anything, they didn't, there was a lot of things that they just left unattended. The fields are absolutely horrible, I've been calling since February...
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
Okay. May I, may I finish some of this, or would you mind, or?
Time is up.
Okay. I think it needs to be addressed, though.
After Christine, it will be Lisa Ramirez.
My name is Christine Blakely, and once again, I'm here to speak to you on...
Jim, can you pull the microphone down to your mouse, thank you.
Can you hear me now? My name is Christine Blakely, and, and once again, I'm here to speak on medical cannabis. I've spoken to you guys many occasions, and I'm a resident of Victorville. You were elected to serve the citizens of Victorville, but somewhere along the line, you decided to serve yourselves. I don't know who gave you guys the permission to play God, I really don't care, but what it basically comes down to is, and what I basically want to know, is that I lived in the city of Victorville before you passed your ban on medical cannabis. And basically, what I want to know, are you gonna grandfather in all the people who got their medical wrecks before you passed your ban on medical cannabis? We need it, my doctors know about my medical cannabis, my insurance knows about my medical cannabis, and for you to tell me that I cannot use medical cannabis in my home is criminal. So are you gonna grandfather all of us in who got our medical wrecks before you passed your ban? Are you going to pay to move us out of your city, because you have now made it illegal for us to medicate legally? Or are you gonna have the police come to our houses every day? Or are you going to have the police come to our houses every day, unplug our medical equipment, and arrest us and send us down the West Valley? That's what I want to know. Doug Robertson said he was gonna make it fair for us, you guys were gonna invite us to the workshops, you didn't invite High Desert Cannabis Association. We've been emailing you guys, you're not responding back to us, which is your, your, your prerogative. But what I don't understand is why you're going against what the constituents of your city voted for. You would have been really disappointed if we elected you into your positions, and when you showed up for work, you were told you couldn't work. It didn't matter if we voted for you and you won, you couldn't have your jobs because, eh, somebody decided you just couldn't have your job. Well, we voted for recreational marijuana, and you decided you were gonna ban it. That's fine and dandy, but medical marijuana is something totally frickin' different. I need it for my treatments. I proved it to you, the last time I talked to you, I brought my medications, I brought my rec, I brought my insurance papers, I even gave you guys a sample of some of the medication that cannabis does. I know you didn't try it, I really don't care, but what I do care about is mine and other people who use it for our medical treatments. What I also care about is be treated fairly in the city that I live in, that I pay taxes in. Taxes that apparently you guys misincorporate because the city's in the red, and I just sat here through one of your city council meetings and listened to you guys what you're using money for. It's unreal.
Thank you.
Question for staff. Is, is medical marijuana permitted under state law that takes effect January one? Use of it? I'm asking about medical marijuana, that's all I'm asking about.
Yes, medical marijuana is allowed to be used.
And our ordinance provides that what's permitted under state law is permitted in Victorville, am I right? Am I right?
Well, what's permitted under state law, there's different options, so. Actually, I would ask Chris to come down, our Development Director. There was a discussion about this at the Planning Commission, and I know he issued a memo not...
Well, let's try to clarify...
Right.
Exactly what our ordinance is.
Yeah.
And as a point of order, I'd like to understand in the future, if something like this takes place, is it allowed? This is a point of order.
Out of order.
This is a point of order. So I'd like to see if this is appropriate, because this will be patterned in the future.
Good evening, Council. Yes, we adopted, in our ordinance, that was adopted through the City Attorney's Office, we stuck to the bare minimum that the state law requires us to do. So yes, can she use medical marijuana? Absolutely. Can she have it delivered to her? Yes. If she has a state medical ID card, she can. Not an issue. What Doug is alluding to is that, yes, the state could go farther, the state allows you to now do medical or recreational. You'd have to, we'd have to zone for that, we'd have to decide how we want to do that. That's what the Planning Commission was working on in their workshops. I, I don't know if you had time to read your memo. I did give you a little bit of an update today, you should have it in your inboxes regarding where those workshops were at and where they resulted in on the last, the last meeting last week.
Just a very clear answer, is the use of medical marijuana going to be permitted in Victorville today and after January one?
It's been permitted since 1996.
Has, and it will continue to.
And just for clarification, did this council prohibit the use of medical marijuana?
We have prohibited the ability for someone to get a license to cultivate, retail it...
Not the question.
This is not on the agenda right?
Prohibit the use of medical marijuana? The answer's no.
No.
So as a point of order, and Rosenberg rules, along with the Brown Act, it is my understanding that we have, we cannot discuss anything that is not in the agenda, and this has been allowed by two council members violating our policies and the Brown Act. I'd just like to put that into the record.
Want to clarify the record, when an individual claims that the council did something that they didn't do, that needs to be clarified, and I agree, no other discussion. If there's another discussion, it should be on the agenda. The charge was, we prohibited the use of medical marijuana, and we did not. That's, that's all we need to say, no more.
Okay, now I have, thank you, Chris. I have Bernice Valenzuela.
Lisa Ramirez? Right?
That's your name?
Lisa Ramirez, yes.
Oh, I have Valenzuela.
Who?
Oh, Lisa, Lisa Ramirez. Are you Lisa Ramirez?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'm not a public speaker. I think there's too many chiefs and not enough Indians. My thing is for the police department. I've been trying for two days to file a police report. Two days. I don't know why there is nobody, 24 hours in the police department to take a police report. My nephew was held up at knife point, and his bike was taken. The next person may not be so lucky. For two days, no one has even called me or come to my house. Elavato and Hook, I've seen the police drive by Michael's liquor store, just like this. There's all kinds of dope being sold out there, all day, every day, and they act like they don't see it. It, it's bad. We're, we're supposed to be a village. I don't have little kids, I've grown kids. But we're supposed to be a village. That's all I have to say. Two days for a police report.
Next is Bernice Valenzuela, and then Bryant Richard. Is there a Valenzuela here? No? Okay. Bryant Richard.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff, and I want to say something, thank you for Captain Shuler for your, your commitment for your police department, because your officers do respond in our area, and I know that you have a backdrop of calls and everything else, but what happens, a lot of times, calls are by priority. But my concern is, I've been in law enforcement, I've been a police officer for probably over 25 years, and I work in South Central LA area, in the bad parts of town. My concern is that, and I spoke to a deputy before, that because of Section Eight homes, a lot of people are inviting people into homes that shouldn't be in the homes, and what I mean by that, you may have gang members, they get out of jail, and they go live in Section Eight homes. And I think, I remember back in the past, we lived here for about 14 years, they used to enforce a way to deal with people that have Section Eight property, because what I know personally, if working in gangs, working in gang task force, is that a lot of times, when a young lady has a Section Eight home, she's supposed to only invite her and their children, it's supposed to be in the homes, not active gang members living at the residence. We shouldn't have a 35-year-old man living at a residence that's a Section Eight home, and I think that we need to suppress that, because we don't want this area, because this is my residence. We don't want this to happen in this city right here, and I see it growing more and more, and I don't want it to be like it is in LA. Excuse my beer, because I haven't shaved, I don't look like a police officer now because I'm on vacation, but I wanted to come to the council meeting and address that. But the other issue is the transit issue that we haven't, we've been getting a lot of transits, and our area has been increasing, and I want to know, is the city going to do anything, or are they doing anything in relation to the transit, the growing transient population? My wife just found some men's clothes laying over by our house. We have, we had a transit come by our house that was next to our house, and our dog alerted on him, and this guy had a knife in his hand, and when I called the Sheriff's Department, they responded rapidly and dealt with that situation. But the transit issue is becoming an increasing problem, and I think that, what can we do to resolve that? So I want to thank you for your time, and that's what I wanted to share with you.
Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting in the back, to talk about the transit issue and the different things that we've been doing.
Miller Marks. And after Miller, it'll be Richard Matias.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and I wish, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm here for, for traffic. I live on Mariposa and Tamarack, and the traffic is outrageous, very outrageous. We had a lot of accidents near my home, and, and I thank Captain Shuler for helping me out and explaining to me things, I know, and the Police Department cooperated with us and, you know, for the traffic, but it is chaotic, it's, it's really out of control. Everybody's just taking their own speed limit, you know, they don't obey the signs and everything. And I needed some protection where I live at, you know, for at least some different signs to drop down the speed, or, or caution light, or a wall for my home, because we had an accident back in October sometimes, and I was in my home, and I don't know what time it was, but it was very scary. I taught that young gentleman, you know, this, everything went off, you know, he hit a curve on my sidewalk, then he landed, he hit the telephone pole, then he wound up close to the freeway, his car is flipped upside down, and that really shook up all my family, especially my wife. And, you know, I just want to let everybody know what, if we could at least have safety, you know, in our, in our home, you know? And there was a lot of accidents, incidents happened on Mariposa and Tamarack, and I just hope we can do something about it right away, because we just don't want no more accidents, and I'm just afraid that something might come in our home and come right in our bedroom and, you know, and this will be too late. You know, it gets a little scary, because there's people driving like, oh, God, it's terrible, and that's all I could say. And please, if you could help us out, I really appreciate it, because we love Victorville, and I know everybody's doing their best what they can for our city, and God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard Matias?
How you guys doing today? Not going to take much of your time. I want to thank you, you guys are hard, jobs are hard, I know, don't interview you. I want to thank you again, because in front of my building today, you guys fixed the sidewalk access. Looks amazing, I appreciate it, but I, I do have a problem, I mean, we got two blocks that are boarded up buildings that are just dying, I mean, there's no tax revenue, there's nothing happening in downtown Victorville. I know we're concentrating on Restaurant Road or whatever, I mean, let's not neglect our history, you know? Parking needs to come back, those parking, the buildings, to me, it's because of lack of parking, the buildings are abandoned, this is, it's ridiculous. I mean, I don't understand how we're just forgetting about Old Town. But thank you for you guys' time, I won't take too much longer, because I have a good night.
Thank you. Those were all the cards that I had. So now we move on to a report from City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just to let you know, the library reopened Monday, December 18th, yesterday, so have new carpeting, new paint, and shelving. Upcoming events tomorrow, from nine to two, up in our training rooms, the LifeStream will be here with a blood drive, so come and give blood. And then coming up in early January, Monday, January 15th, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Peace March, and that is from nine until 12, and it's put on by the Delta Sigma Delta Sorority, and that is everything on that list. Would like to take just a few seconds, actually, to, to thank all of the staff who've been here with me for 15 years, six and a half, as the City Manager. Not to discount in any way the, the newer staff who have come, but I truly appreciate the staff who fought with us to keep this city moving forward, you know, through the rough years, 2008, nine, 10, 11, and 12, when we lost 200 of your coworkers and went down to not even a skeleton staff. And the city kept running, and it kept running well, and I want to thank each and every one of you who, who endured all that and brought us back to prosperity, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we will have discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming City Council agenda. I will start with Ms. Gomez.
So Old Town Planning Update to City of Victorville, hopefully coming up in January, that's what I'd like to see in the agenda. So I make a motion to have Old Town Planning Update to the City of, to the City Council coming up in January. That's my motion.
Is that an update on?
Yeah, just an update.
Who would do that? Chris? Yeah, fine with me.
Seconding the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Anyone else have anything for the agenda?
Yeah. We, we hear from people from the community about problems they encounter personally. One thing we've always learned, after years of doing this, there's always two sides to every story, so I would like to get a report from staff on the dumping issue in Victorville, generally, where we have problems with dumping, and specifically on this location that we heard about tonight. This is the second time, I think, we've heard from, sorry, I don't remember your name. But I, I never want to discount one of, one of these comments, but I do want to know what we are doing and what we're able to do, and what we have the resources to do, and how we're approaching it. So I'd like a staff report on dumping.
That's a motion?
Madam Mayor? Yes.
Is there a second?
I have comments, but I thought I'd, Councilmember Gomez was finished.
Just a second, did we need to...
We have a motion and a second to add that to the agenda. Do you want that in January, or as soon as staff can do that?
Staff can do that.
Yeah, do you want it as an agenda item, though?
Agenda, yes, I'd like an agenda item.
And do you want it January, or as soon as staff is...
Because they can get to it.
Okay, so there's a motion to have staff provide that report, and a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Yes, I did.
So... The second thing that I wanted to see if we can add to the agenda was modification of Council Policy Handbook Discussion, and that's my motion.
There a second? If there's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Go ahead.
In regard to trash in the city, this weekend, I did a little tour, noticed that many, many, many of the dumpsters, the large dumpsters are overload, they're full, they're in the street, the trash, we didn't have wind, if we did, we'd have blowing trash all over the place. I don't know if we have code enforcement that's looking at that, but I think that if they noted that they're full, they need to require the additional dumpster. Secondly, right, when you come into the lobby to pay the bills, there's a big kind of a notice placard that says thousand-dollar fine for dumping trash, people are dumping trash all over the city. I still believe that we need to have a reward program for individuals who turn those culprits in. And I don't care who turns them in, but if it's a thousand-dollar fine, go before a judge, they're going to pay some fine, and a percent of that ought to be given as a reward. It'll put an end to this if you enforce it. If you do nothing, it'll have no effect, and people will keep dumping. I did talk to one commercial individual whose dumpster was full, and he said, well, people from out of town come in and dump their trash in his dumpster, and so I suggested that I would talk to the City Manager, they'd talk to code enforcement, there's a lot of remedy for this, you can have a lock, you can put it behind a fence, but it's, that would be up to staff to carry on that. Also... Also, um, was trying to clean up in my neighborhood and interestingly enough, as I'm cleaning up and picking up trash, um, two of the neighbors came out and began cleaning up because I was cleaning up. And before the weekend was over, most of our two, three blocks was cleaned up. Um, the individuals, both individuals had said they had discussed this and they recommend that sometime, once a year, when we have a cleanup, it doesn't have to be the same time throughout the whole city, that there be a dumpster, free of charge, placed in the neighborhoods with advance notice, that people can use it to dump things that are now sitting on the curb or leaving in the backyard or causing a fire hazard. Those two individuals went to two other neighbors who said absolutely, they have a lot of things that they'd like to get rid of and if they had a dumpster once a year, it'd go a long way in reducing the trash. I don't need this to be an agenda item, I need the council to respond to the City Manager. If there's no interest, that's the end of it. If there's an interest on any of this, then I would request that the City Manager, uh, places on the agenda at a future date. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to see that, I'd like to see an agenda item where we are able to talk about different options as far as cleaning up. I know we do the big cleanup events, but you're talking about things that are much more specific and of it is real individual, it's neighbor. And we agendize that discussion. Can Public Works handle that?
I, I, I think it's something that we are almost obligated to look at because more and more, we see more trash being dumped out of automobile windows, dumped in commercial containers, dumped in the desert. I have a friend that spent quite a bit of money cleaning up a 20 acre site and two weeks later, there was as much trash there as there was before. She started, uh, a reward program, folks, a stiff reward program. That individual paying a thousand dollar fine, you would think next, and most everything that was dumped, the city has a program to recycle or dump free or pick up. That just beyond me, that somebody would dump it in the desert, when almost everything there can be disposed of without any charge to the individual.
You've already agreed to have an item on for a report on dumping? Do you want, do you want the direction of staff to include the information just discussed by Mr. Cox, I assume?
That's all I have, thank you.
I think that's clear to staff.
Okay, now we move on to, uh, reports from council members and I'll have, uh, Blanca Gomez go first.
So on Jan- January 25th, from six in the morning to 10:00 in the morning, there's going to be a time, a time and point count for the homeless in the City of Victorville. And we are looking for volunteers and the City of Victorville has actually committed to assisting with the countywide homeless count. On December 15th, a subcommittee of SBCTA met at the AQMD. For the first time, this meeting was held outside in the parking lot. It was very interesting because this was the first time I had witnessed a meeting commence outdoors. Lastly, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a safe drive over the holidays and always be aware of your surroundings and be careful in unlit areas. Aim for a prosperous New Year and enjoy the holiday festivities. Thank you.
I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and the Sheriff's Department is doing its best to get the word out. If you see something, say something. Get involved with the community because this is only going to get better with your help. And without the help of the citizens, it's only going to get worse. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would like to, uh, thank Jane for coming out and highlighting an issue, um, that, um, I've been concerned about. I have neighbors in your neigh- I'm sorry, I have friends in your neighborhood and that whole western side of, uh, Victorville. So, um, just so you know, uh, what we're talking about is massive. And I know you know that, but I mean from a resources standpoint. Um, but you're in the right place. I think you, you've heard the concern here. We understand, uh, the situation we're in and this is one of many issues where we are overwhelmed. Um, and we do not have the resources unfortunately to keep up with police, fire, dumping. I've got a lot of issues with my neighbors too I'd like to handle, but right now, I'll wait for another time. Uh, we got more important things to deal with. But, um, also the homeless. Uh, when we sweep the Mojave Riverbed, uh, I'm on the west side of Victorville and what do you know? They start showing up in parks, they start showing up in neighborhoods and you can't even let your kids go to school. Uh, so there are, you know, issues obviously, um, and we've been inundated, uh, but there's a lot of reasons why. There's a lot of folks coming to this area, wait, either waiting to go to Los Angeles or from Los Angeles, waiting to go somewhere else. And, and then of course you look at the policies that we have at the state. And, and so it's, it's just, it's all a perfect storm unfortunately, but you're in the right place. And I, like I said, I, I'd like to thank the council for their concern because I know we, we're all in this together, uh, and it, and it is teamwork. And so just having said that, you're in the right place, thanks for coming. We are working the issue and please keep coming. I hope to have something measurable, uh, that we can, uh, be proud of. And I know I'm totally supportive of that as well and I have been for, it feels like more than a year. But secondly, uh, thanks to Doug Robertson, um, uh, for everything he's given to the City of Victorville. It's been a pleasure working with you. Uh, and, uh, I'm sure you're going to be a great asset to the town of Apple Valley and I hope that, um, we can build off of the relationship we already have, continue to work together because you know us very well and we know you pretty well too. So, um, I'd be, you know, I think we can do a lot of stuff together that maybe we haven't done in the past. Uh, and that goes the same as with Carol Lee. Thank you again, uh, for everything you've done. Um, it's, it's a big loss, but, um, uh, you've done your time and you will be rewarded. You finally get to do it and, uh, where I know there's some, uh, uh, concerns sometimes about, you know, now what do I do or whatever? But I'm sure you've got plenty of stuff, uh, that, that you deserve. Um, and, uh, but again, happy holidays to everyone. Um, I'm proud to be part of this team. Um, all of us are, uh, facing issues, uh, in our own areas, police, fire, waste, wastewater streets. But we've also made, uh, some progress every year that I've been here, this is the third year. And, uh, I feel very confident about the leadership that we have throughout the county and in the city and then the high desert in general, uh, to get past some of the issues that have plagued us. Uh, but every year, we haven't been able to resolve everything, but every year I think we've been making progress. So I hope, uh, the next year we'll be able to continue the great work we've done. Thanks.
Uh, just a couple of things, um, and, and I, I reinforce your comments to Doug. Doug, thank you for your service. Um, we had a terrific Christmas parade this year, uh, probably the best turnout I can remember, uh, in seven or eight years I've been riding in that parade. Uh, staff did a wonderful job. Um, I, I want to thank also Victorville Motors who donated the cars we used, council members used to ride around in golf carts. It was always awkward getting back to the golf course through all the traffic and the back roads. Uh, Victorville Motors donated four of the vehicles used, uh, by four of the council members in the parade and I want to thank them for that. But a special thanks, thank you to my very good friend, uh, Larry Huber. Uh, Larry is, for those of you who don't know him, he's the owner of Victorville Glass and owned a mortuary and owns rentals and other things. Uh, he's also a longtime member of the Planning Commission. Uh, he was on the Water District Board with Jim Cox and me back some years ago. A longtime, uh, supporter and, uh, doer in this city. Uh, but on, for the Christmas parade, he made the ultimate gift. He allowed me to drive his slingshot. And Carol Lee had the, the pleasure, not of riding with me, but of riding in the slingshot, uh, as kind of her.
Was fun.
Her adios to the city. Larry, if you're listening, thank you so much. It was, it was fun, believe me. The other thing I want to mention is during this time of year, uh, the next two or three weeks, when you're out on the street, daytime or night, but especially at night, it's really best to assume that half the people driving in your direction or against your direction or anywhere near you are under the influence of something or other. Uh, so be careful, be careful. Also, do not assume that a green light means it's okay to go. It's not. Look and look, wait until all the people who are going to run the red lights are finished and then go, okay? Be careful. Have a Happy New Year and a, and a wonderful Christmas. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, now it's my turn. Uh, of course, you know, Doug, we will miss you, uh, but of course we will be seeing you. And we will continue doing things together. Uh, but I just want the city staff to know, and this includes everyone that's employed by the city. I really do appreciate the wonderful work that they do. Uh, they are always so courteous, polite, uh, willing to help. I admire people when they have courtesy, kindness, um, because I like to be that way. I like to give people what they deserve. Um, and each and every one of them have shown to me a lot of kindness and, uh, courtesy. And of course, I'm going to miss my lovely friend here, Carol Lee, but we will be doing things together. And, uh, I just want to wish each and every one in our city and, uh, the other municipalities a very Merry Christmas, a very prosperous New Year and blessings and, uh, for us to be safe. And, uh, Captain Schuler, you do a very good job of saying that we have safety in our city. Thank you so much, I appreciate you. I have so much respect for you and the police department. And, uh, you go over and beyond your call of duty and, um, I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone and Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Garcia, I have to, uh, ask you please, we need to go back to closed session very, very briefly on Item M. And so you're going to adjourn this meeting to closed session, it should just take a couple of minutes.
Thank you for reminding me, I forgot. So, um, we will adjourn and we will.
Whenever, whenever you're ready.
All right, we do have reportable action from closed session on Item M, Real Property Negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The City Council by a, or sorry, the City Council sitting as a successor agency by unanimous vote of all council members, agreed to enter into a purchase agreement with NAMI Koenig for the property listed as APN number 405072 hyphen 32 for the purchase price of $125,000 using the standard purchase and sale agreement. But however, the transaction is contingent on subject and subject to Oversight Board approval. That's the end of the reportable action.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
There you go, you're done. You're free, off to frickin' Bora Bora.
There you go, you're done, you're free, off to frickin' Bora Bora.